Good evening, welcome to this informational meeting about the proposed pavilion. Just a couple of things before we get started. This is an informational meeting, there will be no motions made, no votes made. This is for information gathering and sharing ideas, concerns, questions. There are some handouts if you have not picked them up. I encourage you to get up and wander over there and get what you need. And the fifth and sixth grade class has refreshments and feel free to, oh, and how is it?
Very good.
Very good, okay. I had a chocolate cupcake with maple on top and I highly recommend it. So, if you want to be recognized after we do our preliminary, which we have, we're going to go through the first two pages preliminaries. I am going to ask you, I don't care who you are, you have to say your name. Holly Ross, every single time you speak, Holly Ross. Yes, I am your elected moderator, in case you forgot. Depends on how this meeting goes, whether I will run again next year. So, if you will turn to your handouts. I have been advised by the select board who is going to introduce themselves right now to say who the select board is.
Governor Eaton.
Melody Squire.
Judy Gilmore.
And they suggest that we go through the first page, well, I don't know if you can tell the first page or the second page, not the one with 1 through 10, the other page.
The other side.
Question comments regarding the proposed pavilion. Yeah, they, they're supposed to be picked them up. It's, oh, it's double sided, mine, I just printed them. So I will read this, and for those who are on Zoom, I'm sorry you don't have them. But I will read them hopefully clearly enough so that you understand. These are listed as questions, comments regarding the proposed pavilion for this meeting. In the interest of financial clarity, please advise on the status of putting this project out to bid. Dollars saved are important to all, especially after the increase in our taxes this year. Are we really on the right path moving forward with this now? I wonder, what's the hurry? To keep people from knowing what is going on? What are you afraid of? By the way, I have no idea who wrote this. Okay, no idea. Why wasn't a committee formed to gather input and present to the select board and the town? Okay, you want me to stop each time? I thought I was just going to read it through and then go back. We'll read it through and then go back.
Holly, if I could clarify.
Yes.
These questions came from people who stopped by the town office and had questions for the select board. We did ask for questions ahead of time, so that's what this list is. It's multiple people attended all three of these questions.
All right, so like, or do you want to go one at a time?
Don't, we can read through them and then go back.
I just, that way, those who don't have it in front of them on the Zoom know where we're coming from. Why should the end justify the means? Why not step back and do it right? There are many grant opportunities for recreation. Sounds like a good idea, but seems like there are many unanswered questions. Lack of transparency, transparency and process is troubling. Money would be better spent helping people pay their taxes by food or medicine. Is this need or a want and who decides that? Good idea, but more people should have been included. Is this the right place, the right size, with smaller work? Conflicting information regarding use, anyone, anytime, no reservations or fee, or have to reserve like a community center, who decides which way it would be? Handicapped access concerns, will there be a wooden path, wooden or concrete floor? Use dollars and efforts to restore the old creamery for similar use. Will primary use be by the school? Will they be responsible for maintenance? Why did it not go out to bid her town policy? Did the select board vote to waive that requirement? Concern for taxpayers being on the hook for maintenance such as roof replacement. Why not let voters have a say? Who will decide answers to questions that come up? The select board formally. So, anyway, these are concerns that were brought to the town office. Oh, there's one more?
No, you got the earlier version.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. What about the use of bathroom facilities, porta potty, question mark? Should there be electricity for lights, music? Will make sure no trash is left on site? Will alcohol be allowed? So, if, if you did, what?
So do you want to answer?
So we're going to. Isn't that what you said? So we're going to go over those. If you have the pavilion overview, there's, there's some, some information on that too. I don't know whether you want time to just read that or whether you should read it. Okay, that's true, Jen. All right. Should I read this page or go back to this page?
Let's read the overview, because I'll answer somebody's question.
Okay, the overview has been put together for those who are in the room, but those who aren't in the room except by Zoom. Pavilion overview. The town of Tinmouth held a community meeting to determine the best way to spend ARPA money in May of 2022. Recreation opportunities and places to gather were high on the list at this meeting. However, ARPA funding was not allocated to this need. The Equity and Inclusion Committee started discussing an outdoor pavilion on the town green next to the town playground slash ball field on the town green in the fall of 2023 and intended to apply for the Better Communities Grant. When we learned that this funding opportunity would not be extended to 2024, we were directed to apply for the Building Communities Grants, Recreational Facilities Grant. As we looked into the specifics of the grant and who and what they funded in 2023, we were encouraged by the fact that two similar building projects were fully funded by this grant in 2023. The E and I Committee coordinated with the Recreation Committee and the school coordinate a spot on the town green next to the playground and ball field. This site will enhance the green and be used by the school during school hours for outdoor classroom activities, covered workspaces for hot or inclement days, after-school program activities, and all school gatherings outside. The community will use the pavilion at after-school hours, weekends, and all summer for recreation and gatherings including concerts, performances, potluck suppers, picnics, family gatherings, and a spot to sit and enjoy the day and meet other children and neighbors at the playground and ball field. Since the grant was due September 10th, a little over a month from when we learned about it, we had a lot of work to do to meet the criteria for the grant application. And doing our research, we learned that a 24-foot by 34, 36-foot timber-framed pavilion that was contracted by the town of Marshfield and crafted by Timber Homes Vermont in 2023. Sadly, 2023 flooding has moved the river far too close to Marshfield's site and they can no longer move or with their project. The town of Tinmouth has been working with Timber Homes and the Select Board of Marshfield to contract for the frame, which is still sitting in the Timber Homes yard in Bursheer to erect in Tinmouth. We have signed a signed letter of agreement with the town of Marshville and with Timber Homes to move forward with this project contingent on receiving funding. We have also applied and paid for the commercial building permit and have that approved permit. We also checked with both the stormwater and wetlands divisions regarding permitting and do not need permits with them for this project. There are concerns about water and carrying capacity. This concern is being addressed with a hydrological study for the roof 140 culvert and consultation with the engineering company that was contracted when the community center was built. There are no tax dollars being spent for this project as debt-donated funds and a grant will be funding the project. The town will be responsible for building maintenance, which is proposed, which is projected as a new roof in 25 to 30 years. This project is a community build model where the town will provide volunteers for the raising of the timber frame and raise the structure together, sheath it and roof it. Tinmouth has a long history of community building projects and is excited to consider another one. This is an excellent way to create a new community recreation space to meet and work together with neighbors. So, some of those questions that were raised might have been answered by that, but in the interest of going through this, we'll go back to what we just read. So, in the interest of financial clarity, please advise on the status of putting this project out to bid. Dollars saved are important to all, especially after the increase in our taxes this year. Are we really on the right path to moving forward with this now?
I think that's a good way to answer. So, can you hear me, I'm Melody Squire? And this is a gift for the town, and so a bid for a purchase. A bid would be if the town is purchasing something. This is a gift that is being offered, so that is why. There's not a bid.
We go back and forth. So, next question was, what's the hurry? To keep people from knowing what is going on, what are you afraid of?
So, again, the hurry, I mean, it was quick because of the grant opportunity. So that would be the reason for it maybe feeling rushed. As far as information, all the committees, all their meetings, all their minutes, and all of them are also. Recorded, yes, recorded. They're all available on the website, tinmouthbt.gov.
So, why wasn't a committee formed to gather input and present to the select board and the town?
So the Equity and Inclusion Committee is the one that brought it forward to the select board. And then we, the Equity and Inclusion Committee then coordinated with the Recreation Committee, because it met both of our missions.
Why should the end justify the means?
It's just an opportunity and I just thought it would be a great opportunity. And I know that when we did the ARPA, trying to see what ARPA money maybe should go for, I know pavilion was one of the things. So that's, that's why I pursued it, since it seemed like a, a good opportunity.
Why not step back and do it right? There are many grant opportunities for recreation.
There are some grants, there is another one out there, but it's a federal grant, which is very stringent. That is the type of grant that Playground was done with and it's, there's a book on all of the paperwork that went along with that grant. So this grant was an opportunity and it's fully funded.
The next one really doesn't look like a question, just a statement. Sounds like a good idea, but seems like there are many unanswered questions and that's why we're here tonight to kind of answer the questions. Lack of transparency and process is troubling. Anything more about that?
Again, all, all of it is transparent on the website. And also, also, I mean, all the meetings are warned. They're front porch forum, if you see the warnings on front porch forum, and they're always put in three places around town every morning for every meeting, three days before a meeting.
Money would be better spent helping people pay their taxes by food or medicine.
So this money, a lot of the bridge loan that we're getting from the, well, through the Tinmouth Community Fund, but from the Vermont Community Fund, is actually money that's restricted. And this money is actually something that the Community Fund, the Vermont Community Fund would really like to see in a project such as this, a real community project that everybody can access. So that is, that is why the money's for a project like this.
Is this a need or a want and who decides that?
Well, I think that already the town has been surveyed a couple of times. We've had our survey through the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. We had ARPA questions, what should we do with this money that we have? And so this has already come up as a possibility, something that would be nice for the town. So.
Good idea, but more people should have been included.
So that's what tonight is for, and again, that is what, having meetings warned and having them available in so many different forms for you to be able to be informed.
I just, for this next question, I, I think maybe if you look at your packet, you can see where it's supposed to be, it's proposed to be located so that you can see. Look at that, because the next one says, is this the right place, the right size, the smaller work? So if you look, you can see where it's proposed to be placed.
And the other reasons, my reasoning, as we were talking about it as a committee, was the fact that it's near the community center, it's near the school. It'd be great for when we have fun day, when it's really hot. It's also near the playground, the ball field, the outdoor classroom is there, and also the trailhead for the trail up the mountain is there, so it would have multiple uses by school residents. And children are school, are town residents, so town residents and school children, so, yes.
Conflicting information regarding use, anyone, anytime, no reservations or fee, or have to reserve like a community center? And who decides which way it will be?
So a pavilion is an open space, is meant to be able to be accessed by anyone at any time, so you don't have to make a reservation. And we already covered in the overview about times, I mean, obviously our playground, our ball field is not accessible during school hours, but there's lots of times throughout the year where, when it is, and the pavilion will be the same.
Handicapped access concerns, will there be a wooden path? And also a wooden or concrete floor?
We are required to have an ADA path, so we will have a path about three feet wide that will most likely be sure pack from the bridge that goes over the, the swale, I guess it's a swale. And it will follow up along the playground up to the pavilion.
And the floor?
The floor, oh yeah, the floor, and we are talking about having sure pack in there as well.
Use dollars and efforts to restore the old creamery for similar use.
So, the old creamery, we, I mean, I've enjoyed having pizza time over there and things like that, but the building itself is not, at this point, useful for public space. You would need to have, to actually get, by your safety permit, you would probably have to have an engineer to actually go through the building and make sure it's safe for public use. And ARPA money was actually allocated to the whole primary $20,000, so they have funds.
Will the primary use be by the school and will they be responsible for maintenance?
The maintenance is most likely whoever does the grounds for the playground and that, that hasn't been decided. We wouldn't probably be just able to decide that until we actually know if we have a building and how that works. I know that there was concern sometimes about maybe after hours, dark hours and things like that, and garbage and things like that. And I actually asked Jen, the principal, and I said, is there trash around in, in the playground area? You know, over the weekend or things like that, and she says there is not trash. I would expect that and hope that our community would respect the space as well.
I think we already answered this next one, why didn't it go out to bid? So, this isn't being bid because it's not a purchase. Concern for taxpayers being on the hook for maintenance?
So again, maintenance most likely would just be the roof replacement in about 25, 30 years. I've bought our roof is, right now, I think the actual cost of the roof is about $4,500. So it's, it's not a huge, huge cost. There will also be insurance, which will be pretty minimal for that building.
Why not let voters have a say?
Well, we're getting information precedent for other bills that we've had or giving money for others has been, we put things out to bid and they haven't, we haven't gotten an opening. And so, that's not a. For us, also because of the gift, and we already had something in place and ready to go for the grant, it was just something that wasn't needed in this instance.
Okay, we're, will decide answers to questions that come up. What about bathroom facilities? Are we going to have lovely porta potties?
Right now, the playground doesn't have bathroom facilities or the ball field when people are there. If people have rented the community center, then there would be access to the bathrooms inside. Just as if their, their community center is rented and there's people accessing the ball field or the playground during that time, so.
What about electricity for lights and or music?
Right now, it's light, lighting, electricity is not in the budget. Possibly we could have, you know, some solar lights at some point, work for another grant at some point, but right now we do have lights on the community center that will give it light, so.
So who will make sure no trash is left on site?
Well, hopefully that's everybody's responsibility. Hopefully everybody will take their trash with them and won't litter, and if that happens, any of us that are there can see it, hopefully we will pick it up and be responsible. That's part of being a community member, in my mind.
Will alcohol be allowed? I really wonder whether somebody's hoping the answer is yes. I, I don't know, we don't allow alcohol anywhere, right here?
I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, in my mind, I wouldn't want alcohol on the premises, so that would be something that we would have to decide.
Is there a policy?
For the community center, there's a bring your own policy, yes, yes.
All right. Now, if you turn over your piece of paper, do you have a piece of paper? Do you have the paper? Okay, I just wanted to, you haven't been waving at me, nobody's seen it. All right, so these are 10 questions on the back. I don't know where these came from either, where these 10 come from?
An interested citizen.
A.
And interested citizen.
Okay, so I guess this is coming from one person who had 10 questions. Why?
Well, we've, we've already talked about some of the whys, and so that, hopefully they've been satisfied with what they've learned tonight so far.
Since the pavilion is being built on the town green. Not sure what the parameters of the town green are. But, seriously, is that considered the town green?
This is all the town green.
All, all of it? Okay.
Ball field and all the way around the church.
Okay. Everybody get that from, we're sitting on the town green right now. Did the select board go before the zoning board for approval?
We did, we got a zoning permit for the space, and then we're told that the, by the zoning administrator, that we needed a conditional use permit, which made the zoning board of adjustment get involved. And we had a meeting with the zoning board of adjustment, and at that meeting, the one thing, because of issues and concerns about water, we needed to be able to bring back to the zoning board of adjustment reasonable assurance that that would not be causing too much concern.
Why was all of this decided behind the backs of the townspeople? Are we going back to taxation without representation?
Well, again, this was a gift, and again, all of it is, is very transparent. Access the town website and read some tales, it's also in front porch forum.
Will the select board police the area every time after use?
No, we do not police the area now with the playground and with the ball field.
Will the users of the pavilion have access to the community center for bathrooms, running water, et cetera?
We have addressed this, I believe, already, so.
If all users of this pavilion have access to the community center building, which we already said isn't necessarily the case. But who is responsible for cleaning? Please don't feed me the line that these, that these people will be responsible. We all know that the end result is the school custodian being paid through taxpayer dollars will end up cleaning floors, bathrooms, et cetera. Well, we're not talking about cleaning the floors of the bathrooms of the pavilion. And what about paper products and other materials purchased through taxes? Okay, this, this is not having to do with the pavilion, so I, I ruled that one is out of order. Unless somebody disagrees with me, I repeat it. I did. What about paper products and other materials purchased through taxes? We're not dealing with paper products out on the pavilion. So bring your own. This is, this is not something that if somebody wants to come, they, they say, oh, you have to bring your own responsibility for the paper products.
Are you taking, why, finish now or no?
No, not yet, not yet, what do you mean?
It has to give access to the community center. Michael Fowler, I, I would just like you to just read it out. I mean, someone took the time to.
I said that, I, I read it. If all users of this pavilion have access to the community center building, who is responsible for cleaning? Please don't feed me the line that, that these people will be responsible. We all know that the end result is the school custodian being paid through taxpayer dollars will end up cleaning floors, bathrooms, et cetera. And what about paper products and other materials purchased through taxes? Is this also the responsibility of the taxpayers? And what I was saying was, we had already answered that question, but if you need it again, we will answer it, go ahead.
So if, if, if the community center is rented, then there are, there is a whole set of rules and expectations that you need to follow through that rental agreement. there is a whole set of rules and expectations that you need to follow through that rental agreement. Um, paper products are part of that. Um, I think the paper products they're most likely talking about is um, paper towels, floor hands and toilet paper. If they're using the bathrooms, am I correct? I don't know, but that's what that's what I'm assuming. Yeah.
Next. If access to community center is given, who is responsible for unlocking and overseeing use? If they need to use the community center, why can't they just res- reserve the building and take all the responsibility that comes with community center use and application?
That is exactly what will happen. If they want access with the community center, then they will have to go through that application. And follow those rules.
We know this is a very dry year, but after being employed at the Timmer Elementary School for many years, during some wet years, it never dries up in that area. Also, we all know that when wet gravel slash dirt or whatever ground surface they use will be tracked into the community center if the users of pavilion are allowed this. I am not an engineer, but simply so- someone that saw many years of muddy shoes. No amount of drainage can change that and water will take the path of least resistance. We all know that. I don't see a question on that one.
I will, um, I will say that um, the Timmer School and the kids are here, um, they have a lot of outdoor activities. So there, that is going to happen. That that comes with the territory. Um, they have um, outdoor classroom that goes into the woods. And so that is part of a part of it. Um, far as that again, um.
Just talking about muddy shoes.
Oh, so, but it was addressed, talking a little bit about water. So I I'm very well aware that water is um, a concern from the hill there. Um, and I want to, as more I've learned about this, I mean, it's gone years and years and years back. And people are telling me that water stands in there for weeks at a time. Makes me think that this is a health concern and it should not be happening. And so if this process and this site work helps mitigate that, I think that's a good thing.
Number nine, onto maintenance. Nothing lasts forever. Damage slash roof repair, replacement, et cetera. Most of us will have gone to the great beyond. But we are leaving the next generation the burden of maintaining another structure, just another taxpayer obligation. For those with deep pockets, this is probably a nonentity. I think they mean non-issue. Um, once again, I don't see a question there. I think that's more about the state number. Number ten, our taxes are high enough without something that is totally not needed. We have the community center, the old firehouse available for local people to use.
Again, um, what I'd like to say there is yes, we have the community center. We have the old firehouse. They all have their um, great additions to the town. Um, the pavilion is more of a third space where it's very, very um, there's no need to reserve or anything like that so that people can come and go, meet new people. That's kind of the point of of a pavilion. And for me also, I'm thinking about a such person such as my brother-in-law, who because of medical issues cannot be in the sun, but would like to enjoy being out there, his grandchildren, playing on the playground, that type of thing. A lot of us can't be in the sun for different issues, health issues, medications that we take. So for me, that's really important. We've lost our shade tree over by the playground. So I think that um, that would be a big benefit.
Okay, I do call your attention um, to the other pages that are in the booklet that you received tonight. For those on Zoom, there are a lot of pictures of where the placement is being proposed and then a lot of pictures about the pavilion and the size and the dimensions and um, the trust work and all that. Okay. You keep going. You go to the last page. And there's the budget. Everybody see that? Last page, the budget?
The last page, the budget? Uh, I mean, if it, I think that it felt pretty clear.
Yeah, either, it for those of you who um, like me, perhaps weren't at the the meeting, I did watch it. Two hours of my life I will never get back, but um, the September third meeting um, it went through a lot, a lot of these questions. And um, the fellow from Timber Homes was on Zoom and he answered a lot of the the questions about the the budget also. There's a, yeah, the there's a question about the insurance and we don't know at this point what it would be. But that that would be another added item to the budget.
But we do have a contingency that could help cover that. But I mean, I guess that would be covering insurance. That would be, contingency for any other unexpected thing.
Also, I I personally heard this week that all the ARPA money has not been allocated yet. Is that correct? And it has to be allocated by when, Gail?
Twenty twenty-six.
Has to be allocated by the end of December. I think it's about fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, now. Oh, we will open this up to to questions. Once again, even if you think I know you, I might not know you or my your name might have slipped my mind. So if you come up to us a microphone, that'd be great. And that that way everybody um, can hear you. But remember first thing, what's your name is, and then you state what your question or concern is.
Hey, me, minor. I'm a jointed landowner. I'm wondering if this report is outdated because it mentions a hydrologist, but not in any of here.
So it does mention that we are in consultation with the engineer, the engineer that actually, the firm that was contracted for the community center. So they actually have site plans and um, and they've actually looked at maps and most of the soils are ready and we're gonna have a consultation with them.
So that's an already paid for and doesn't need to be in a bunch of earths in here?
The, it's an, I don't know what that cost will be. We have a a community member that's going to pay for that.
Great.
Other questions?
Not particularly your question. Marshall Squire, Mo Squire, anything else you wanna go? Um, just a little bit of, for the folks on the um, TV or whatever it is. And I would suggest that other folks um, um, watch this as well. Um, Timmer has a long history of uh, community projects, this one being one. Um, two additions to the school, barns, houses being built. And this is another opportunity for the community to get together and welcoming all of you to come and be part of it. It's gonna be for our kids and our grandkids to be able to use this. It's not an expense to the town. Yes, you say in thirty years, you're gonna leave this. They're gonna be able to enjoy this thing and have fun under it um, for that whole time and even beyond. So I'd like to thank Melody for once starting this, Kevin for voting to have it go forward. Um, and I think that the, this would be a uh, nothing but a benefit for the community. And I encourage everybody to um, want to participate in putting it up. So um, I'd just like to thank the select board for uh, giving us this opportunity to have this.
Um, okay, Hollis was getting that behind you, but go ahead.
Peter Gilmore. And I'd like to know why you triggered the question on why can't the taxpayers vote on this at the meeting?
Well, we've, I guess um, we've already gotten a sense in my mind, we did, from what the town was looking for when we asked about ARPA money, where should it go? And we also got a sense of what the town might be looking for when we did the Brit- Brit- Bretton Regional Planning um, survey. And so we moved forward that way. And that is uh, and because of the timing, I think with the grant, the possibility of being able to put it up in November.
It's a town thing. Why why can't the town vote on it?
Well, it's a gift to the town.
As you say, with this this bridge, uh, what do you call it, bridge loan or whatever, somebody's gonna have to pay that back eventually.
Well, we already have the donations in place, just depending on the grant. So that's what we're wait, we're waiting to hear. We will hear about the grant next week, hopefully.
Also, last meeting, Marshall said it was free. Before the night was over, you, the town handed the bill for thousand dollars.
No, that was, that, no, that was paid for privately. That was paid.
I know it was, but only because you got Tom alive.
Uh, no, I was, I came with money. I came with money prepared.
Oh, okay. Wait, wait, wait. Let's let's keep it down. Get to use it. Okay. We are, we are dealing with an issue, not personalities, please. Okay.
So I was fully prepared at that meeting. I had cash with me to actually pay for that um, plan that wasn't needed to move forward. There were certain things we needed to have in place to move forward with the grant. Um, the other select board members were given the grant application August twenty-six in an email. So they had plenty of time to actually look through the the whole grant application.
Um, Hollis, what's the next one up? Well, fine. Okay. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm Michael Fowler, and I go to every select board meeting. If anyone was going to know what was going on, I would be, aside from Cherry Johnson, you know, we go to every single meeting. And at the last meeting where I just got a little uppity over there is that I was watching Melody try to hand off the bill for a thousand dollars to the town. And that's what got me upset. Some of you may have even watched the end of that meeting. That was a very long meeting that we talked about everything that we're talking about tonight. And there's a lot of good questions here, you know, on this, you know, why? That is, that is a really interesting question. Why do we need this? You know, we have buildings, we have many, many buildings that actually do everything that she is talking about. This is something that, you know, Melody came up in her mind and she approached the select board and they tentatively said, go back and get information and then we will present this to the townspeople to vote on. That was the intent of when they approved this initially. And Melody took it upon herself. As she has stated, she is the only one that has been talking tonight. And she has been talking about, this is something that she has done whole hog on her own. This has not been, you know, she took the agency away from our other two select board members. She took it away. And she made decisions, she made contracts, she did all the things that the select board needs to be doing as a group. You know, the other two members need to be involved. And more important, just as importantly, the townspeople need to be involved about if we are going to build something, you know, nothing is free and this is not a gift. We are, there's a, there's a price tag for seventy-two thousand dollars, you know? And whether that go, whether that's donated to the town, it still goes through the town. You know, that becomes our money and then we are, it is not free. Nothing is free. And, you know, to look at where we want to place this, there are limitations, there's water limitations, there's questions, there's issues. You know, there's a whole bunch of other things that we should be stepping back and talking about. You know, is this, is a twenty-four by forty gazebo that has no lights that you can't use, you know, this time of the night? Is anyone gonna go sit in the dark in the gazebo? We're not gonna be able to use it during school hours. You know, this is, there are so many things here that we need to just brachiate it right back. Because, you know, just because someone has an idea and they want to do it, doesn't mean that it's the right decision and the right building project at this time. The old primary is an absolute ideal situation for this type of thing. We have a a government, we are working on, you know, the lead mediation, we want, and it's a town building, it's there. It's like, why are we doing this? You know, this does not make sense. It really does. You know, other than I I came up with an idea and I found a building and let's do parala. You know, like the volunteer effort, you know, there's paid contractors that are gonna put up that frame and then, you know, the volunteers are gonna put plywood on and put on the roof. That is the extent, you you know, this is not going to be the old-fashioned barn raising, yada, yada, yada. You know, like, and the fact that we're having this meeting now should really, like, people should pause and reflect that. You know, maybe we should think about this some more. And, you know, if if we don't get this grant, let's spend the time and actually come up with a building that, you know, if the town even wants it, maybe the town designs it itself instead of getting, you know, a building that is, you know, half off or a fire sale or however this thing came to be. You know, the town did not pick this building up. You know, and the only member of the select board is Melody, who, you know, just spearheaded this whole thing. And, you know, I may be not speaking to the choir right now, but you all need to be thinking long and hard about, you know, is this really like, like, what are you doing? Like, we have other, we have a lot of other issues in this town that we need to be dealing with. Instead of putting on, and to my, to my perspective, this is another school addition. Like, eh, and it's it's just, it's so like slapdash that, you know, come on.
Alice?
I'm Hollis Squire. Um, to address the issue of the water some, um, there's, I don't see any way to go any more water here than what's there now. When those caves up there on ghettos get full, it comes down and it shoots across the ball field. Some comes in this ditch here. Uh, never had any trouble with that culvert up here. Um, because it all ends up in the same place. It was across the ball field, comes into the ditch there and runs down, down the side of the road. So I don't see any.
Can can we have it quiet in the corner, please?
I don't see any uh, issue with 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 water. The culvert down below by the town garage takes the same water and then gets more water from off from the Valentine place. And I think the pavilion would be a good idea.
Yes. Um, three's the data. Um, I just wanna start off saying, Melody, I like you and I'm not trying to attack you, but I do have more questions. Um, so I absolutely loved the picture that you painted of like, leaving everything to kids and grandkids. Like, I can see myself and my kids hanging out in that pavilion, excuse me. Um, my my issue stems from the financial aspect, just, I mean, having our taxes literally just double. Um, so my questions stem around the financial piece. Um, if the pavilion, assuming it gets built, uh, becomes unmanageable or hostile to users, is there a possibility in the future of having it be managed by a building manager?
Can can you, just for clarification, what do you mean by hostile?
I mean, I like, if um, if people can't multi-use it peacefully. like if somebody is there having a picnic with a family and then another family comes along to use it and says, hey, you know, we were gonna use this and get out of here and, I mean, that, that seems kind of hostile to me. I'm a very peaceful person.
So your bottom line question was, is, is there a possibility in the future of having it be managed by a building manager? So you, you're talking about somebody who would, like, start to rent it, like, have, like Trish signing up for it, is that what you're saying? That's me. Okay.
I don't believe so. There's, I don't know what scenario would warrant the building manager.
Okay. Yeah, somebody to schedule the use, but just wondering if that would be a possibility down the future.
Oh, yeah.
They're having a discussion among themselves.
So they coincide with the usage of the community center if that's what we need.
Okay. Well, so my, my, if, yes, um, this is a taxpayer expense because that would fall onto somebody being able to schedule. Um, my other question is, how often does Sure Pack need to be replaced with a five? Don't know. Uh, just thinking expenses.
Do we have a Sure Pack, uh, authority?
Um, yeah, but, uh, that is both classes, not like you got a truck ride over it. Yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I get Sure Pack on my driveway. I've been, I've been there since ninety, I'm seeing when we find that, listen. Okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah. Trying to remember how long that Sure Pack has been there. Hasn't gone anywhere. That's why I got it. Okay. Uh, other questions, comments, raise your hand so I can recognize you. Come on up. Even though I recognize you, you have to tell your people what your name is.
I'm Caleb Scott. Um, this is all.
You can adjust the height too, if you'd like.
This is all kind of deja vu because if you remember, we kind of had this discussion when this community center was projected to the town. There were a lot of naysayers, wasn't gonna cost anybody money, cause it was all done with volunteers and grants. Yet people complained about the maintenance, which is what I'm hearing here tonight, the maintenance. I don't think anybody's complaining about the maintenance about this building. It's part of our community now. We're happy to pay for the maintenance. We have to put a new roof on the pavilion that becomes widely popular. I don't think anybody's gonna complain about putting a new roof. We started with, this is not the two-room schoolhouse that it used to be. This is, the town changes. I know some people don't want it to change. If we were two-room schoolhouse, the community built one addition, built two additions, built this addition. That's what it tends to does. And to, something that is not gonna cost taxpayers, it's like, really, are we, this is kind of, seems like you're kind of nitpicking just cause you wanna be against it. I wanna thank Melody. I know people are trying to blame Melody for this whole thing, but it truly captured the imagination of a lot of people in town. So it's not just your project anymore. It's a lot of people in town. You brought the seed in, which is beautiful. You planted it and look what, if, if we get a pavilion, it's gonna be an asset to the town. So I'm just like to say, I think that anything we do to create assets for the town that could help create the sense of community is a benefit. There's just, there's, there's no downside to it.
Come on up. Yes, you do. Something everybody in here, especially the people on Zoom.
My name is Andy Ussary, and, uh, I've been around long enough in life to know what Michael said is true. Nothing in life is free. This thing is gonna cost the taxpayers eventually. Maybe not this year, maybe next year, the year after, but it's gonna cost us. And I'm personally fed up with paying another dollar in taxes after this last year with our school taxes. Motor vehicle, we're paying more for motor vehicle. Every time something like this comes up in this state, we find a way to charge the taxpayers and that's my concern. We're gonna end up paying something for this. And I'm against that personally.
Um, Hollis? And, and are you, do you need to clarify something? Otherwise, I'd like to have, everybody have a say for one time before we have repeats. Jan?
Hi, I'm Jan Pants. And I'd just like to echo what Caleb said. Thank you, Melody, for bringing this idea and a way to bring this together as a town. Um, I've lived here a long time and I have seen so many benefits from people coming together on a project that is visible and you work, you show up and you work together. Um, so hats off to her for that. Thank you. Um, I'd also like to speak to the fact that, um, it is an enhancement to our school. And our schools are our community. It, it's, it's where our families come together, it's where kids meet each other. And, um, they're looking at consolidation in different ways. And at this point, our school is thriving. If we can do things that keep that going, let's do it. And we've got, um, a great outdoor program here and to have a pavilion that enhances that, um, it's just one more star for the Timmies School. Thank you.
My name's Colleen Balch, um, and I wanna say thank you, Melody. I make my living these days as a grant writer. Um, people hire me to write grants and they're very difficult and very painstaking and they demand a lot of attention. And I'm not sure that we all appreciate that the application was completed in four weeks. That's pretty unbelievable. I also wanted to, um, I, I'm not gonna be probably the person who would help raise a timber frame. But I, I would like to offer to volunteer that if grant sources, because there is concern that this might cost the town money. If grant sources that are identified that could provide lighting or electrical service or anything of that nature, or that just deal with ongoing maintenance concerns, I'd like to volunteer my efforts to try and help apply for those grants. So.
Go ahead.
I'm Andy Gilmore. Um, I have one thing, or more questions, sorry, I think. Is this a need or a law? Who decides that? And what? Hurt tonight is more of a law than a need and I think there's only a select few who are deciding that. And so I'll select the members. And then my other question is, in here you have that you're going to want to use it for concerts, performances, fall dinners, picnic, experiment gatherings. My question is, is how are you gonna do that? There's no electricity likes than music. And, okay.
All right, so that is possible suggestions of how they might be, uh, the pavilion might be enjoyed. I, I don't know, um, how that would all happen. Um, maybe if we do get a grant and we do put electricity in, that's when that would happen. Um, picnics don't necessarily need to have electricity. Um, a concert, we have, we have music that happens, um, for our fun day. And the fun day is one thing that I think the pavilion will be extremely useful for, um, to help people have shade, cause it's always hot, cause fun day is in summer. And we have, we do have music, live music, and they plug in to this. But they plug in like this gear over there by the corner. And they could, um, they had their own tent that they put up. Um, so if the community center or if the pavilion was there, then they could actually be under there and that wouldn't.
Would an extension cord be enough?
I don't know. I don't know the answer, but that would be something that, um, we'd have to look into. Yeah.
But then, and how are you, I, I just don't, and hiring everything to volunteer, like hot blocks without a camera right there. And I'll, if anybody ever pushed a wheelchair, it's sure path, it's not you.
All right.
My concern for getting that accessibility.
Okay.
It is.
Okay. Did I see another hand?
First of all, I've written a couple of letters to the SLIP.
What needs your name, Shirley?
Shirley Mae Heffernan Zandy Bussar. Which one do you want? That's all of them together. But anyway, I wrote a couple of letters to the SLIP. And at this point, I'd like to thank Judy, cause she is the only one that knew how to hit the right line. Thank you, Judy, for getting that to me. Sorry, Kevin and Melody, didn't hear from me the one of you. Sorry. Um, but I, and if you ask it, I'm on this road most of the time, every day. I see kids maybe once every other week. What makes you think we're gonna have more kids because we got another building?
Uh, I believe that that was brought up from Jan just now. I didn't, I don't remember saying that there would be more kids. I think that there would be more access by community members for, for this. With the pavilion.
I have questions about that, especially with electricity, no facilities. Um, it just doesn't seem like it's gonna happen. We've had picnic tables out here for years. I've never seen anybody have a picnic here. Have you?
Um, I have, yes, and that may.
Rec Committee did last month on Sunday and you had a whole bunch of people here and had a party, a ton of it.
Once in how many years?
Well, that's the one I'm telling you happened a couple of weeks.
Right. I just, I don't see it as a big draw, especially with no electricity, running water, plumbing, whatever. Good luck. But, and again, thank you, Judy. The other two I think I know, but I'm not sure. Hey, did I see another hand?
Is anybody okay having Hollis speak again? I don't wanna take any, I don't wanna take anybody. Oh, Sherri has her hand up. You were supposed to, you were supposed to, okay. Okay, Sherri, you're, you got the floor. Make sure you speak up loudly.
Okay. Thank you, Melody, for working on this grant. I have.
How do we, how do we get that? We're, we're working on technology. Sherri, just a minute.
What?
Try it now, Sherri.
Okay, I'm Sherri Johnson, and I wanna thank Melody for applying for this grant. I am a person who, twice for fun days, got very sick from the sun. There was no shade. Um, so I would appreciate having a place that had shade so I could participate more instead of feeling quite ill. The, um, Old Creamery does not have shade. It's very sunny in the, um, afternoon. And it is not a place that's conducive if you don't wanna be in the sun. Also, you can't participate in things over on the school side if you're over at the Old Creamery. Thank.
Good, thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Nope.
Oh, okay, go, go ahead.
Doug Fontaine, uh, I'm on the rec committee, by the way, but, uh, I wanted to step back and, uh, when I, when I looked at the list of questions, many of them did seem nitpicky to me and sort of throwing up roadblocks for a gift to the town. The maintenance issue, you know, I built a little, um, pavilion out for the, uh, the kindergartners and then the preschoolers out there. Uh, I don't know, five or six years ago, I don't think any maintenance has been done on that. So there will be maintenance eventually, um, but, but let's, you know, look at this realistically. This is a gift to the town. And if the town has to pay for a new roof in 25 years, you know, it's well worth it. And it's, this is a resource that the town will have, um, available to all the townspeople, um, as well as the school. So I say, don't look a gift horse in the mouth.
Thank you. Any last calls before I let Hollis speak again? Okay, Hollis?
Um, having.
Add your name.
Hollis Squire, sorry. Having participated in, in this building, both for the school additions and other things, it's a thing that I think really brings the community together, brings the people together. You're talking with your neighbors, you're working with your neighbors, you're sharing food with your neighbors. Um, you get to be better neighbors. And I think that's a really super good thing because the town is getting so divided. Something like that has a chance of bringing it back together. Sort of like the, the storytelling thing that we do down there has brought a lot of people back together. You, you, you learn things about the town that you didn't know or about the people. And I just think if, if you participate in one of these things, you know what I'm talking about. It's, it's, it brings everybody closer together.
Thank you. Anybody?
I just want, nothing much to do with it, but the fire department has posters. Our game supper is coming up here in a month. And if you have a place to put one up, please take one and put it up for us. We have a fundraiser.
Okay, that, that's from, coming from the fire department, they're, um, orange, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or, orange flyers, if you have a place to put one up where everybody can see it, not just in, on your refrigerator at home. Feel free to take one and publicize this event because it's the main, oh, you got your hand. Well, main fundraiser for, for the fire department. Who's, who's hands up?
Aileen.
Aileen? We're, we're gonna try and do this again with the technology. Hang on. And state your name and we'll see if it comes through.
Um, Aileen Minor.
Okay, we can't hear you. We hear you, I can't read lips. No, I see that you're. Hang on.
She doesn't look famous. I'm not near this. Okay.
Talk loud.
Aileen Minor. Can you hear me now?
We, we actually can't hear you yet. Hang on.
Try to keep talking so I can see where to put the speaker on.
Aileen Minor?
There you go.
You're good.
Wake up with your butt. I think you've been out your earbuds.
It's to help you get your butt?
I think so.
Go back in, not be able to tell him.
You, you have to talk so we can hear your, we can hear you. We did until you put your earbuds back in.
Can you all hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, now I can barely hear you, so bear with me. Aileen Minor, so we had talked about tonight that there was a study being done. When should any of us get the results of that study and will that study hold up? Moving forward, if the results aren't what we're looking for, or what will the follow-up be if that's not results that we want to see?
Just to clarify, you're talking about the water situation?
Yes.
Melody's going to talk, responding. The hydrological study, we're not sure when that is. That's done for culverts in towns. The, the engineer consultation. We will receive information from them about how to mitigate our site if they feel that there's potential issues. And that information will be sent to the zoning board of adjustment. And we can have that meeting, which you will be alerted to when that happens.
Did you have any follow-up? I see that you're back where you were before. We couldn't hear you. She said no. Okay, thank you. All right, good, all right. Gail?
So in the chat, there are people on Zoom here, and in the chat, there's two comments. In the future, I think it would be more appropriate for the authors of questions to be included in the record as if they were at the meeting in person. And then another one is, again, I would just like to reiterate the need for these authors to be disclosed. Feels incredibly inappropriate to have these anonymous questions asked or hiding behind anonymity to bully the select.
Are there other questions? Concerns anything about the pavilion that you want to comment on? Oh, I'm sorry.
One question. Is this going to be brought up before the town, town meeting or for a vote?
The answer is no.
It's not going to, the town people won't, don't get a chance to vote on this? No.
We, just, just a, just a point of order. We are not a democracy, no matter how much you want to say that we are, we are represent, we are a republic. Where we, we elect our, our people to vote and make decisions on our behalf, whether it's the President of the United States or our select board. So we do, that's how we are represented is by the people we vote in. So. Just, so yeah. What?
We vote, we vote for the budget.
That, that, that's, that's a separate issue. We're talking about people and the people who make the decisions.
Can we identify the speakers, please?
Okay. I remember your last name. I don't remember your first name. Andy Gilmore, that was speaking. Do we have other comments? I would take a motion to adjourn. We can adjourn, right? There's a motion. And that is not debatable.
Please pick up your chair.
Wait, 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 we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
It's a select board meeting.
Oh, they have to, select board has to say that. Okay, go ahead.
So we're going to adjourn. This is part of it. I'd like to have a meeting.
So the public part of the select board meeting has been adjourned. Okay, select board can say aye.
Aye.
To, all right, so then my job is done. Now you're on. Okay, thank you very much for coming out.
Select board is meeting, this public meeting is all welcome to stay.
My name is Jeremy Carboni. Related to all of this, on Sunday, I am heading down to North Carolina to go to pay. They're also seeking any winter coats, kid sizes, adults, anything you guys have. I live right on Gold Road in Dedman. Right in the intersection. Thongs, wet shirts, coats, anything that anybody has, I will take that.
And please go over to the counter and support fifth and sixth grade trip. You can't eat it now, take it home with you. Let me take the. If you can all just come over here, then I, it'll keep recording it. And I think without the background.
Yeah.
The select board meeting is continuing.
Yes.
I just got around the box a bit here. I have something in the office for you.
Well, there's a thing coming up next week that I need to see if I can. The other thing, Gail, is we haven't done an audit.
So we were trying to continue the select board meeting, but the select board seems to be not coming home as well. Bear with us, anybody that's. I think it all disappeared this problem. This is going to be hard for anybody to listen to to try to figure this out. I found Melody. I found you. Now we got to get them over here. Sherry, can you still hear it?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think if you have the people move a little away from the microphone, we'll be okay.
Well, the microphones are picked up to the L is right next to the computer here.
Oh, okay.
And I can't unplug it and everything, so.
No, that's okay. I, if, no, the people who are chatting would like just go a little bit away. That would work.
Well, they will.
Tell David to move.
Hey Kevin, you wanted to do this. Thank you. Thank you for. I think I'm going to pause the recording until I get Kevin over here and then I'll start it again. I think I can do that. Should say. Yeah, we're going to do it right here. That's where the recording is. Kevin said he wanted to have a brief little discussion about what happened to the process going forward. This is here, so. It's recording.
So we're continuing the existing meeting?
Yes.
So my thought on this is. So my thought was.
Can Kevin move closer to the microphone? He's, I can't hear.
Can you hear me now? I just don't want to scream. So my thought is, if you get the 25. For another hour, it gets restarted or whatever. And then select board is moving in that process.
So included is.
Everything. I mean, I just want to know where it's at. I would like to get a look on it. So. Sure pack thing is why they say. That, that's. That's really good, sure pack, no worries. I mean. Wouldn't have to put those out there. I don't think, no, I think that.
We did look at what ADA required.
I don't think sure pack or wheelchairs get along again. So is that like something we have to, we just agree on?
Anybody else have a comment?
Does Sherry want to say anything? Did you hear all that?
No, but I can tell you, I have pushed a wheelchair on sure pack and it can be done. It is, it's actually not much more difficult than pushing it on the side of the road. I pushed my mother from the old snack bar to the old firehouse and it, pushing on sure pack was the same as pushing it on the road.
So I mean, I just think it. Just look into the base of it. Maybe just look into what cement would pass. Or in a pad.
Oh, for the.
For the base of it.
It makes it less. Curvaceous that way.
You're now officially adjourned now at eight thirty two? Okay, now we're all done.